Good evening, y'all. Welcome to the April 3rd Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Devereaux, please take a row. Letting you know that Phillips Combs said he will be in remotely and late. At this time Lynn Larson is absent. Mark Herr.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Alan Talbo.
Present.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have quorum chair.
Thank you. Approval of minutes dated April 3rd. Y'all had a chance to see him online. Good.
Most to approve.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Herr, second by Ms. Wallace, that we approved the minutes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Approve. Thank you. We have any updates to our agenda this evening?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Public comment? Anyone sign up for public comment this evening?
No one signed up, Mr. Chair. We have one person just called iPhone in attendees. So I don't know if that's Mr. Combs or if that is someone ready to make comment.
Individual is not unmuting. We'll just assume they don't want to speak at this time, okay?
Okay.
We'll go on to a public hearing. We don't have any public hearings this evening. We don't have any unfinished business. But we do have new business. Ms. Spear, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, good evening once more. What we have tonight are two different topics, but they're both related to transportation. And we have a guest presenter to start the meeting. Mr. Troy Poswinski. Hockswinski, sorry. Who will be talking to you about the draft six-year Transportation Improvement Plan that will cover the years 2025 through 2020-2030. And then I will be covering the comprehensive plan transportation element at a high level for you tonight. But leave it for Troy first, and I'm going to share my screen for his presentation. Oops, 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 sorry. My bad.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Appreciate your time this evening as the city presents the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for 2025 to 2030. This year, we're not presenting or recommending any significant additions to the program. We are looking at just removing 13 projects of which we have either completed, completed the construction on or will be completing this year. So a significant achievement for the city to complete those projects. Not really planning on doing anything further. And I don't know why my screen's not quite lit up over here yet. Oh, right there. There it goes. Excellent. So, as I mentioned before, not doing anything significant this year in terms of the projects that we have. And I apologize that this thing is not. There we go. Technology, right? We absolutely love it. Absolutely. So, the first segment is the roadway improvements. These are our large capital projects. They could typically have curb, gutter, sidewalk on them. There's a, there's a list there. We've approved these in years past. The update on this segment is strictly related to the dollars. We advance them about 8% for 2024 from the 2023 values. And we'll go to the next slide. Same with these. These are continuing on. A large chunk of the projects you see here are either in design or heading toward the construction route. A good chunk of them are. Again, the only updates to these are the funding amounts. Next slide. This batch, the same kind of deal, but further projected further out. Not a lot on this has even got funding associated with it quite yet. And we're looking at funding a chunk of these further down the line. We did apply for a grant for 3020148, the downtown plan, the Green Street Loop, for the planning phase of that for $1.1 million. We hope to hear on that next month. Next slide. A chunk of these projects. Yes, a chunk of these projects toward the bottom are associated with the sound transit in the Springbrook neighborhood. Sound Transit is going to be fully funding these projects in 2024 through 2030. So a chunk of these will come off here in the coming years. And the last segment is a little bit more of the sound transit projects we've got coming toward us, as well as John Dower Road, a project that we're looking at going after some grant money later on in the year.
Quick question.
Absolutely.
So the majority of the projects are funded 25, 26. Is that because we started in 2003, I mean, in '23? Or why the majority of funding for that, for those two years? It's not, not, and not further on out?
Not further out. It's because of when the, the money has come in. Further out, what we're seeing there, not seeing there is the sound transit money that's coming in, as well as some of the grants that we have not hit on yet that we either anticipate getting or, you know, that they're fill-in work. So between '24 and '26, we have about $70 million worth of construction projects that we have to complete. We anticipate about the same for '27 through '29. It's just that money hasn't quite been fully obligated yet. So we don't show money in here that's not fully obligated.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
This segment is for the signals. We did complete one signal project this year. You'll see it later on in the packet when we get to the deleted section, the 84th and Pine. The signal's not quite up yet, but it will be here in the coming two months, as well as that. We do have grant funding for one project on this that will come off on the next cycle. That is the South Tacoma Way and 92nd. We're looking to bid that project in November and construct it over the winter at South Tacoma Way and 92nd. The transportation planning, this is for pavement management system. We allocate, I believe it's $13,000 a year. Is that what it says up there? Apologize. Do my notes. We allocate a chunk of money, or $50,000 every four years, or $13,000 a year for the pavement management system to rate our pavements. Street lighting, we have programmed in there for the next two years, about $180,000 per year to finish up the street lighting programs we have. We're currently two years behind on our street lighting, or about a year. We didn't do a '23 because we're still trying to mop up our 2022. Tacoma Power has been kind of difficult to deal with in that regard for their permitting. As soon as we get done with that, we're going to kick out the '23 and '24 and plan for '25, '26.
And we will, the city will now own all lighting. Before, it used to be owned by some of the utilities.
So, these lights are not, the lights themselves are owned by, the utilities are stuck to the TPU poles. However, the, we pay a monthly fee on that for the, for the, for the light itself, for the use of the power on the light. But we do own that light on their infrastructure. Bridges. We do bridge inspections through Pierce County. And then we also do have a guardrail replacement on Clover Creek that we've got budgeted over the Clover Creek over here on Gravely Lake Drive. And the Neighborhood Traffic Management Group. This is an annual program. We just programmed $27,000 in for things like speed bumps, traffic studies, that sort of thing. And finally, the list of completed projects that we have. We, like I said, we had 13 projects that we've completed either in '24 or they'll bleed over a little into '25, but the bulk of the construction will come off here. This one and this one. I apologize, I did not include in your packet a sheet number 16. It's our preservation, our annual chip, chip seal patching. We put about a quarter of a million dollars into the patching and striping and about $360,000 per year programmed in for chip. Have an additional project in there for the 112th Street overlay that we have funded in '26 through '27 along the military frontage on 112th between South Tacoma Way and Steel Street. With that, I ask you any questions you have?
Questions for commissioners?
I do have one question.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
So when we, when you were flipping back, talking about maintenance, pavement, chip seal, whatnot, against the spend on projects, that is phenomenally low number. So what, and I hope this isn't an ignorant question, but what do we do when our maintenance expectation exceeds our budget, budgeted fund allocation? Is there a place where we can pull into that and reallocate if necessary? Or how does that work, I guess?
So, a large chunk of our capital projects historically, over the past probably 20 years, has really helped the pavement maintenance and the maintenance of our overall structure, infrastructure. When we go to build these projects, traditionally, they've been in roads that are falling apart. You know, Lakewood Drive would be a prime example of that. We used to have a patching budget of about $50,000 a year was all we had, you know, about 10 years ago. And of that, probably $37,000 would be spent on Lakewood Drive. We went through and rebuilt that road 2018, 2019. And it's kind of continued on with that. Washington Boulevard was just about shot. We were spending a lot of money on patching that. We've since redone that. So it's kind of a two-edged sword in that route. Is that some of these projects, capital projects, are actually taking care of some of the maintenance on some of the, some of the systems that we have. As far as your question in regards to can we reallocate some of that money? The other edge sword of this is we get a lot of grant money for funding these projects. There is TBD money associated with some of it. That money's already been programmed in. So there's not a lot of ways to reallocate the money that we've got of these capital projects to go to maintenance.
When we get grant funding or project-specific funding, is there a line item in that plan for ongoing maintenance that gets set aside for future expenditure? Or is it all construction phase only and then post, post-project maintenance is kind of on this, on the city as a separate line item?
That, that's a great question. But yes, every program that we have ever gotten money from is just strictly for the capital phase. There's no ongoing maintenance. It's strictly to expend money on the capital phase of that. So nothing moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I'd, I'd be interested to know what this body can do for you in terms of extending your efforts of managing a city and staying ahead of the game if we can help you.
It's a great question. Boy, I just don't have a tremendous answer for that. I would have a much, much better answer if this was in, you know, if we got a grant next month in May about that Green Street Loop. As we would be on the, you know, cusp of really doing something different with that plan, that grounds, that downtown plan with the Green Street Loop. At that point, you know, we would definitely want to be more involved with you guys at that aspect. That's definitely more of, to me, a planning and a, and that route. We're pretty well booked, solid for transportation capital improvement projects from now until probably '28 or '29. As far as what I have for staffing, as well as what basically the market will bear for Lakewood to be able to construct things. You know, $60 million over a three-year period is pretty, pretty aggressive. So I'd like to say I had a better answer for you, but really, that's my big one. Is if we hit on this Green Street Loop, we want to hear from you guys a little bit more on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Talbo?
Well, thank you. I wanted to ask, and I also sent this question to Ms. Spear and Ms. Devereaux last night, just to probably possibly give you a, some time. But I was interested to understand, in the text section upfront of the tip, it describes for the TBD funds, the Transportation Benefit District funds, that there are, that council authorized the use of the revenue stream to purchase bonds in order to construct seven projects eligible for TBD funding, but unlikely to garner outside agency grant funding. So I was just wondering, what are the seven projects? And are they available to view on the website so folks can see what their public funds are, are directed to?
Absolutely. That's a great question, and we should put those a little bit. I did look at the website earlier, and it's not up there. I do know of the seven projects. We've been, you know, building toward them. The seven projects are Hipkins Road, Ardmore-Witman 93rd. That's currently just got reopened here this last week. We have three projects in the neighborhood of Idlewild Elementary, 112th from Interlochen to Idlewild. Interlochen Drive from Washington Boulevard up to 112th. And then Idlewild Road from 112th up to the elementary school. And that just kind of completes those three projects, kind of complete the north-south connection between Washington Boulevard and Silicon, Silicon Boulevard as well. The other two that are still yet to come are Mount Tacoma between Interlochen Drive and coming back to Whitman, that segment there, as well as Nianza Road, which we've just, are about ready to ask the council to award a design contract for, to get the work started out there. Nianza from Gravely South to Gravely North.
Thank you. And I take it that in all these projects, are we, are we pretty much talking about like curb, gutter, sidewalk?
Yep, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street lighting, for the most part. That's basically, I think that's all we're talking about for a lot of them. There might be a couple of roundabouts. We put a roundabout out at, out at Northway and Hipkins. We'll be talking to the council here shortly, as soon as we get some preliminary design about potentially Nianza North, as well as I've heard rumblings about, you know, potential roundabout on Mount Tacoma.
Thank you. And then I wanted to ask a broader question. You know, as you probably have experienced in the grant applications with PSRC and even TIB to some extent, or even just other statewide or other federal applications, now cities and jurisdictions are being asked to justify in their grant applications because it's a particular criteria point to justify to how they, how they are working towards or meeting, meeting areas that, 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 you know, measure up to equity. And so particularly, I wanted to ask, is there, is there, is there a decision point in, in your staff, in your internal decision-making process? Or is there any sort of criteria as you rank and as you rank projects in the tip and prioritize them, in which equity is considered? Either geographic equity or just equity in general is considered as a criteria point? How do you, what's your, what's your prioritization process for ranking and prioritizing which, which areas of the city get investment in their streets?
Excellent question. Depending upon the grant application, the scoring criteria, you know, it can weigh more heavily than not on some of these equity, and we weigh that in there. We, we know exactly which segments of the population are going to score high with these things, and we look at that before we apply. A good example of that is the safety grant that we're currently applying for through WashDOT. Their equity percentage of the score is now 40% of the entire score is based upon the equity. So we look and see what lines up well with the tip with where that's at. So we're making an application for Phillips Road for that, that program. PSRC, we kind of do the same thing, although we kind of have pre-programmed projects specifically for that, since it's, some of our projects are federalized already, and we don't like to taint money too much along with that. So, yes, we do look into each individual application across that spectrum.
And then, does that also measure into your, your guys' decision-making process for pavement rehab and the way in which? I mean, I know for pavement rehab, you know, there's certainly, there's the condition of streets and the, and the PCI score attributed with, with, with the, with the street condition. But just going off the PCI score alone may, may not make the most sense, especially, especially if there's areas in the city that haven't seen overlay or street investment in decades. So I wonder if that applies to your process as well in that area?
It, it does to a limited extent. We've, we've done a pretty good job programming out our chip seal through the years, and I believe we're programmed out to 2030 on that. And, you know, what, what we're hitting is what we're hitting, and we actually look like we're hitting almost the entire segment of the, of the, of the street system. As, as far as the patch goes, we literally get reports from maintenance where we need to hit the patching. It's, that, that money dries up pretty quick with what we've got. We, we don't have any other really maintenance functions other than the chip and the patch. Those are the two maintenance functions we have. So, you know, I don't have a better answer than that for you.
Okay. Mr. Larson?
First of all, thanks for all the work you're doing. Lakewood is so much better for it. I wonder if you could help me understand the thought process behind when we install roundabouts, when we don't? We've installed a lot of them in South Lakewood. There's a big intersection where a light was taken out, block off Silicon Boulevard, block off Meadow, where it's now a four-way stop. It seems like an obvious place you might use one. So I just wonder if you could help me understand how that conversation goes? Because I know roundabouts are very controversial.
Yeah. So the, the block off of Silicon Boulevard, are you talking about the Ardmore-Witman 93rd?
I think so, yeah.
Yes. So we're, we're, we just reopened that, and we reopened it just under a temporary condition until the traffic signal comes in, probably in July or August, and we're going to put the signal back up.
Okay.
We did look into whether or not a roundabout would have feasibly worked there. With the design vehicle being a semi, it would have required massive taking to the point where we might have had to take a structure out. At that point, we kind of start looking, well, maybe it's not the best use of public funds to do that.
True.
So we decided to go keep with the traffic signal out there. As far as your other question, what we look at is, first of all, safety on these things. That's the reason why we ended up doing what we did on Washington Boulevard was safety. We had 180 accidents out there over a three-year period with a couple fatalities that were preventable if we would have put these roundabouts in ahead of time. So, you know, we definitely look at safety. We look at the mobility, the traffic studies for it before we decide to fully pull the trigger on recommending a roundabout to the council.
So where we can, where there's not a prohibitive factor, we do install a roundabout, is that thinking?
In the correct location. Obviously, we're not going out to 512 and, and South Tacoma Way and installing a roundabout there. Just not a good idea.
Is there a traffic count threshold that one considers?
There is. There's a threshold for a one-lane roundabout, and there's a threshold for a two-lane roundabout. And we're trying to shy away from the two-lane roundabouts as much as we can. I know we put kind of a modified multi-lane roundabout down at Nianza South. But we're trying to stay away from those as much as we can.
I think, just coming back from Ireland, where there's two-lane roundabouts everywhere. It's, it's scary. Yeah.
The, the learning threshold here in Lakewood has been pretty good, but we're not ready to try, quite try something like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Another question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. With the tree canopy goals that we have in Lakewood, what considerations are you making towards trying to make them more environmentally friendly? They say the sidewalks, making permeable use, trying to save significant trees. I noticed that some of the contracts say that the person building it, or the company, can take down whatever trees are deemed necessary. And that may be quite subjective. So I just wondered, are there any efforts to make that process a little bit more green?
Yeah, we, we have made efforts with that in the last couple of years. First of all, we identify which trees need to be cut, and it's not a, you know, you can choose which ones need to be cut. In addition, we've had some where it's a designer's call whether or not it might be borderline, particularly if we're, you know, typically, the tree doesn't need to come out because there's a sidewalk condition with it. It typically needs to come out because there's root problems with the infrastructure we're building along with it. You know, whether it's a water main or whether it's a storm drainage pipe or, you know, a streetlight conduit coming through there. If we clip the roots all on one side of the tree, it more than likely is going to fall the other way toward the house. We don't like to do that. So in the last two years, we have put out in our contracts, you know, a clause in there or a bid item that states, we're going to try to save the tree. It's a tree-by-tree goal, go, you know, go or no-go. And it's determined after the digging is done whether the tree needs to come down. So we're trying our best to save as much of the trees as we can, but if it's, if it becomes a danger situation, then we're cutting them.
And what about permeable sidewalks? I know that are ADA compliant. There are some cities that are doing that.
Correct. And, and we have only gone to permeable sidewalks over the oak tree down at Veterans in order to save it, in order to give the roots enough air down there. Other than that, like I said, we haven't run into a lot of situations where the sidewalk itself is causing the tree to come out. More times than not, it's the infrastructure that we're digging along with the sidewalk, either a water main or a storm drainage pipe, something of that nature that's much deeper.
Thank you.
One more question?
One more question, and it's about streetlights. Because a few meetings ago, when we were, when this commission was talking about MFTE, and one of my colleagues made a, Commissioner Holmes made a comment about giving staff tools and us needing to give staff tools to, you know, to accomplish the, the economic objectives that we have. One of those things, I think, can be streetscape improvements and streetscape planning, and particularly things like pedestrian scale lighting. And those design elements are things, to me, that I think help promote and maintain a sense of place and, and give neighborhoods a sense of character that strengthen the, the vibrancy and the fabric of the neighborhood. Lakewood hasn't, we, thankfully, we have streetlights on, on some of our major streets. But I do think that, you know, streets like Bridgeport Way, some of these major arterials could benefit, and even Gravely Lake, you know, can benefit from that. Kind of is needing that enhancement, so to speak. And so my question is, are there, how does Public Works look at the business of pedestrian scale lighting? And I ask it that way because some cities, you know, take the approach that they're difficult to maintain, and that's it. And so, wash your hands, walk away. I just, I'm just asking, how does, how does, how does, how do we, the city, look at? What, how do we look at those type of design elements?
So traditionally, Public Works has been, the mindset of Public Works has been, we're going to meet the minimum standards. And the, the best way we have been meeting those is with, you know, the 35-foot poles hitting a larger area that way with a more intense light. That way, we can spread them out and be more economical with it. What I really would like to see is, like you, I mentioned earlier with the downtown plan, coming back here and talking exactly what it is that the Planning Commission, as well as the council, is going to want to see on that, because that's really the biggest bang for your buck. For what we currently have planned now... For what we currently have planned now, you know, we, we do have some pedestrian scale lighting. We did some out at, out at the park or, well, it's in Elwood Drive, but a lot of people consider that the park with the little, you know, pedestrian scale street lighting through the, through the woods back there. So we, we aren't adverse to it for sure, but it's not something we've traditionally done because we've just kind of been full steam ahead with it. But yeah, it's something we will definitely want to look at in the future as we're moving forward.
Yeah, I think I would just encourage and promote that we, that we do and that we kind of keep a different perspective and open-mindedness to that because I think, you know, as just newer generations that are living and moving to Lakewood want to, want to, want that, that strength and vibrancy. And that's what, that's what helps make the place livable and gives us a sense of character and place. So thank you.
I just had one other, yeah, one other question. Sorry. Thank you. I noticed that, I love the lights, by the way, and the ones in Elwood, I think are fabulous. Well, thank you so much for those. Over at Clover Park, you put a bunch of streetlights up and they've been there for quite some time, but I've never seen them turned on. Is there some issue with that?
Yeah, we just got those turned on. Some of our power purveyors are a little bit better about hooking them up real fast than others. So they literally had them wired up and ready to go and we were waiting for a power purveyor to come through. And especially during the winter months, it's kind of tough to get the crews off of street storm repair or whatever.
Yeah, they look great. We kept waiting and waiting. It's, I'm so excited.
They're on now.
Are they on now? I looked a couple of days ago and I hadn't seen it. So.
Oh, it was dark a couple of days ago still?
Well, let's see, I was out of town. No, it was a week ago.
I'll have them look into that because we do have power to that now.
They were on last night.
They, they were on last night? Okay, good.
I probably dismissed them then because I was, I was going out of town and I hadn't seen them. I kept waiting for them. I was so excited. Thank you.
Any questions?
One last from myself. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Herv saying. I didn't quite get the gist of it all. I think what you were saying with our, our grants are more like restricted funds and therefore for a particular project, but for the initial project, but not for continual maintenance of that project. So if we need continual maintenance, you say we have to go back to another grant?
Traditionally, yes, but there, once you go back to another grant, these grants we get are very, very successful on projects where we do not have sidewalks or ADA facilities already in place. They're extremely difficult to get for pavement maintenance. And that's really what we're talking about here. How, how often is a sidewalk, you know, really? Every once in a while, a sidewalk panel buckle here and there, but it's not too bad. Once you build the sidewalk, it's probably good for our lives, our lifespan. It's, it's more along the lines of the pavement maintenance or, you know, the streetlight maintenance we have a, we have a budget for replacing the lights. It's the pavement maintenance. Thankfully in Lakewood, we're blessed with the soils we have because a lot of these roads for Washington Boulevard, for example, we didn't touch that for the first twenty-five years of this city's, you know, likely livelihood. It held up because we've got such great rock underneath our pavement. So they do hold up for the most part. So we're probably going to see, you know, thirty-five, forty, maybe even fifty years of life on Washington Boulevard or streets like that. And, and since we've incorporated, you know, we've hit a lot of the major arterials. Pack Highway and South Tacoma Way from one side to the other, Gravely Lake Drive from the freeway all the way up to Silicon Boulevard. We've hit the major arterials in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years really with our new pavement core section, which is much thicker than what Pierce County used to put down. I was really shocked on Lakewood Drive when we tore that out and there was one two inches of asphalt out there. You know, you got forty thousand cars ripping up and down the, the road on two inches of asphalt. We put six inches back. So it's, it's got a good lifecycle. That being said, yeah, no, there are not grants traditionally. I mean, PSRC has a run for pavement preservation, but we were capped out at seven hundred and fifty thousand every two years. That's not a whole lot of money.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
And Ms. Beer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one second, please. Our next topic I will cover, and it is coming back to our 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review. If you recall last meeting, we talked about the initial audit of the transportation projections for growth and where traffic patterns might change or become more congested over time. And tonight, we're actually going to look at a little bit of what the large package will be coming to you next meeting. I can't believe we're actually there for how new comprehensive plan elements are going to look, how they're being edited and how that's going to be described to you and to the public. And then also trying to summarize for you what the big substantive changes are related to transportation tonight. So with that, I will begin to share. Sorry, one second. I always lose this, this command. There we go. Okay. So forgive the redundancy for some of this information, but for the benefit of those who might not have heard this before, there is a periodic update checklist that the Department of Commerce put out that covers all of the different elements and what needs to be updated, or at least local governments need to verify that their elements have been updated to reflect certain changes in state law or changes in regional policy, et cetera. So this is the stuff that refers to, first of all, the GMA, which is at RCW thirty-six seventy-eight, making sure that you're looking at your plans and related development regulations. And then the checklist also talks about what specifically needs to change since the last update cycle. So that was back in twenty fifteen, believe it or not. And so we now have an initial checklist that was prepared last fall, end of last year. And we've, we are now having to update that because the Department of Commerce updated their checklist. So by the time this comes to you, again, in a couple of weeks, you might see a few minor tweaks. But what we'll be talking about tonight is the majority of what you'll see for transportation. So the substantive changes, and let me back up one second first. As you've heard me say, in addition to what's being required to be updated, there may be choices that the city wants to make on its own, within its own discretion for not only transportation, but the other elements that wouldn't necessarily be included on the checklist of what we have to do, but they will be included in what you see and what people are considering at the council level. And then there are the, the optional things like the sub-area plans and such, which also will have some information related to transportation changing in there. But this is what's being done based on what we have to do per changes again to state law since the last periodic review. So there needs to be an update to the city's comprehensive plan element to talk about current transit alignments, meaning Pierce and Sound Transit. We need to be looking at the levels of service for the locally-owned transportation facilities. So our road system here in the city of Lakewood, looking at the traffic forecast. And some of that we talked about with the audit last time, but I will have some additional updated information for you come the more formal presentation starting next meeting. Looking at land use assumptions, obviously will affect this as well. So we've talked a lot about the housing changes and the population allocations for the city and how that now will be translated into the traffic forecast. Looking at state and local system needs for current and future demand. So within the city, we have the Sounder Station, which is part of a regional commuter rail system. And we also have I-5 and we have the interchange to five twelve. So what I am in the middle of doing is reaching out to WashDOT, as well as the transit agencies to try to gather as much information as I can to respond to some of the state system needs. And then if there's something from Pierce Transit, for instance, regarding local system needs, I would incorporate that as well to what comes to you. Looking at future funding capability. And so part of this was just talked about by yourselves with our, our guest speaker about how do we look at capacity, but also maintenance of transportation systems, be they for motorized transportation or active. Looking at the multi-year financing plan based on the needs identified in the comprehensive plan. So we just talked about the six-year tip and so looking at how that would be financed over time, making sure what we have in our comprehensive plan is updated to how the city is currently conducting that sort of work. An ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan that looks at removing barriers to access for individuals with disabilities in the transportation system. And that is something that if Public Works hasn't already started on this work, it is on their work plan to be working on. But that will be provided to you in May as well, just a status update regarding that. And then looking at intergovernmental coordination efforts, and that is more than just city to county or city to city. That again, looks at, because this is transportation-related, interactions and partnerships with WashDOT, with Pierce Transit, with Sound Transit, but also perhaps looking at school district bus routes, looking at commute trip reduction and transportation demand management requirements, which are also part of what we're going to be doing in this ten-year plan. But these are the areas where, looking at the checklist that was created by Commerce, we are seeing the need for some substantive updates to the Lakewood's current comprehensive plan policies. So when this comes to you, these things will be discussed, and I'll show this in a moment. But essentially, you'll see what's in the comp plan now, what the change is required per what Commerce has picked out of state law, and then what the new language would be as a response to that. Excuse me. Get back here. So the types of amendments, just what I went through, those required ones. But then there's also things that you'll see that are simply rewritten for brevity and for clarity or reducing what's become over time, sometimes repetitive comments or policies, just because things were adopted in different pieces over time. In some situations, there's been a combination of goals or policies because they may cover similar topics. And then there may be removal because there was something that was incorporated in an earlier version of the comprehensive plan that has now been accomplished or state law has changed, something like that. What you see if you were to just look at numbers related to the current element versus the proposed is we're dropping about seven goals, not to say that each of the twenty-one are in the fourteen goals or vice versa. We're just going from a total of twenty-one goals to fourteen. And the number of policies within those goals is dropping as well. So to repeat what I just said in a probably a better way, the fourteen goals aren't necessarily going to be verbatim some of the twenty-one. They may be rewritten, they may be new, and so it'll be a matter of tracking through that audit document that shows you current, whether it's changing and if it is, why, and then what the new language will be. So this is a sample of the checklist. And so you'll see on the left-hand side, the requirements per either state statute or the administrative code that the state adopts. And you'll see here on this table, is it in the current, meaning city of Lakewood's comprehensive plan? And then there's a yes or no with further explanation. And then are changes needed, yes or no? So on this slide, for instance, we've got five different things that are required. Four of those require some update of some kind within the city of Lakewood's documents. And so the explanation within the changes needed to meet the statute column will explain what and why, and if it's a big deal or a somewhat minor change that needs to happen. And continuing kind of the same thing, again, these are on the left-hand side, what's required per GMA. Is it in our comp plan is the next one here. And you'll see on the bottom, for instance, no financial planning is included in the comprehensive plan right now, but that does need to be added. So we need to be bringing up to speed by pulling some of the information that's been recorded in other documents over time into the comprehensive plan, so it's more easily accessible to the public in particular. And then if the changes are needed, you'll see in, in this slide, for instance, the first two, maybe you want to revise it, but you don't have to as the minimum. And then on the bottom two, there's actually the recommendation that they do be changed. The last two here, talking about funding falling short, how will that be addressed? And then also the intergovernmental coordination efforts, one is in there, one is not. The top one, maybe you want to revise it because it would be best practice to do so. And then meeting the current statute on the second one with that intergovernmental coordination. Yes, we need to add something to the comp plan. So this is how you'll see all of the elements. It'll come forward like this to you first at this high-level summary. And then you'll see also the audit document that gets more specific and hopefully is clear for people to be able to read. And that's what this starts to show you. There's quite a few. I'm not going to go through these word for word. I'm not going to go through these even at a medium level. I'm just going to go high level tonight and feel free to ask questions. But again, what you see on the left-hand side is the language of the goal, which will be in the shaded rows. So for here, you've got the goal of maximizing transportation connections without negatively impacting residential areas. What you see in the middle is why or what is being changed, how is it being changed? And you'll see here, the types of different explanations you'll get across the board. So it's a clarity-brevity thing, meaning it's not a substantive change that needed to happen, but it's just to make it more readable. Or we need to, for instance, that ADA transition plan, it's not in there at na, at all right now. We need to add it. And then you'll see also down towards the bottom, there's just a minor change. So those are the types of things to clue you in on where the hotspots might be or where big changes are being proposed. And then on the right-hand column, you'll see the actual language for the goals and policies that are going to be coming to you. The other one I want, just want to show you, down there toward the bottom on this screen here, you'll see there's two that are totally removed. So the designating truck routes for freight and then requiring new development and redevelopment, et cetera. Because these are repetitive or added into a previous policy, these are being removed altogether. And so on the right-hand side, you see that there is no new language reflecting that. The other thing I would just caution everybody about is to go back to that idea that the new policies, those fourteen in this case for this chapter, are not necessarily just seven less of the twenty-one, but reading the same. The numbering is also different. So policy one in twenty twenty-three under transportation may not be policy one in twenty twenty-four's version. And so because of all of that, moving things around, because we're meshing and making sausage here so much with this document, as we go through this review, I am hoping that we can use this document rather than a red line strikeout. It would just be, trust me, impossible to try to use that as the way to proceed. So there will be the twenty-three version of the document, the twenty-four version, both of them clean. But then you'll have this document that clarifies where the changes are. And I hope that that will help everybody involved kind of track what's happening and what's being proposed. And the other thing I would suggest for all of you is to start with this and then maybe read the, either one of the versions in their entirety in the other document, should you want to. But this is really going to help focus your attention as to where you may want to ask questions or propose amendments if we get to that point. So again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but this just is demonstrating to you, like here on this one, we're actually removing an entire goal, not just its accompanying policies, because it was added above into a previous policy and so we don't need it a second time.
Where are the? The way to obtain, to reach that goal? Do we get to see that also, what the, what the particular department or city wants to do in regard to reaching that particular goal?
Are you talking about implementation?
Yeah, implementation, yes.
Yeah, that, that is its own element actually in the comprehensive plan. So it won't be really detailed at this point. What we're going to do is get through the ten-year adoption and probably for the next two comp plan cycles, there's going to need to be some refinement made. And so you'll see an implementation element that updates from the twenty fifteen. It will identify departments that have lead, lead control over a particular topic or goal, or if there's more than one department involved. But it, it's not going to be to the level of this is our work plan or this is our definite for the next three years, we're going to do X. And if there's something where you think there should be that kind of direction developed, that could be part of your recommendation to council to program into what the department does along with Public Works, for instance, with transportation over the next year or so for the next cycle. And I say, I'm just, there's lots and lots and lots. But if, if you want to try to figure out how to dedicate your time, I would point you first to the middle column just to see where it's substantive change or not. I would point you first to the middle column, just to see where it's substantive change or not. You're of course welcome and encouraged to read it all, but just, we all have other things to do. So you can see where this is, we need to do this, or we could do this, or it's just a removal, or it's just a redraft.
This is why I asked, Ms. Spears, for example, 8-1, decreased overall dependence on single occupant vehicles for mobility. I mean, so many, how does the city do that?
Right.
You know, and that was, that would just be interesting, I guess, for myself anyway. But Commissioner, also, how, how do we intend to do that?
Yeah, and some of that will come out. If that is the goal, then there will be strategies underneath that that flesh that out a little bit. And if you have questions based on what you see, because again, the schedule is May 1st and May 15th, these are discussion meetings for the both, for the commission. Your hearing is June 5th. You have another discussion meeting after that, and then you take action. So you've got a total of five meetings at this point. You're welcome to add more should you want to, but that's the schedule now. So if you are within any of those meetings feeling like you want more detail about where would this go, assuming it gets passed as written, I can try to provide that with, to you or bring in the right department to answer those questions. But it is, it's going to be, we can't give you really great detail until this is even adopted. Council has to say yes, and then we'll start working on implementation.
Mr. Larson?
Are these regulations challenged by the public, by other agencies, by the staff, by people working with them in the past? I'm wondering that, and I'm wondering, what jumped out at me was the ADA. ADA's been law for ages. To just have a one-liner that says consistent with state law seems to me to be a whole lot less work, and that leads me to wonder about these other categories. I like the increased brevity already, that makes a lot of sense and such. But I'm just wondering how much good this whole documentation process does? Because if, if it's not being challenged, well, maybe that's a good thing, and maybe that's what it does, is it provides a pathway so that it's as clear for people to make decisions as they find projects and growth. But could you address that a little bit?
I will try. Let me know if I'm not answering your question. So what I heard you ask is whether, like, a comprehensive plan adoption is challenged? What the language is? Okay, yes, that can happen, and yes, it has happened. I don't know that Lakewood's comprehensive plan has been challenged in the past, but for sure, the counties has, for instance, multiple times. And the way that happens is if council takes the action to adopt, first, the Puget Sound Regional Council certifies whether or not its transportation planning is consistent with regional policy as well as state law. And if it's not, they're not going to quote certify that plan, resulting in no transportation funding until changes are made. So that's one level of challenge. And members of the public, as well as members of the PSRC boards, can advocate one way or the other on the certification. The other way to challenge this is to go to the Growth Management Hearings Board, where again, a member of the public, an organization, a tribe, even another jurisdiction, could come to the board and say, this doesn't meet X, Y, or Z out of the Growth Management Act. So it needs to get corrected. If the hearings board makes a decision one way or the other, either party can then challenge to court. And then it goes on however long it goes on, and then the city reacts to what the final decision is. So those kind of things happen each year, could technically happen for a comprehensive plan. But the 10-year review is when every single page of the comp plan is open for review and therefore challenge. The development regulation side of it is usually challenged more along, a project is coming in, some decision is made, the proponent or the opponent is not happy with how the city decides to approve a project. That goes through the LUPA, the Land Use Petition Act, up into eventually the court as well. So you've got the policy path, and then you've got the regulation path.
Thank you.
Sure.
Question, Ms. Talvo?
A couple of questions, one of starting with minutia about the 10-year forecasting. I know state law requires 10 years. Typically, cities do forecasting for a 20-year horizon so that it's consistent with the land use. Would we also be doing that as well in this work, or just simply a 10-year look ahead?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I'm trying to remember in 15 if the forecast was actually beyond, I think it was. It was beyond 10 years because we're still talking about it as if it could continue to be used. So it will be updated, and now that I'm sitting here thinking my way through it, it will go at least through 2040, if not to 2044.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would think so to be consistent with Vision 2040.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then the other question I had was about safety and identifying the high injury network and the analysis in the work that goes into identifying, like, the worst, the unsafest, the top 10 or the top five unsafest intersections. Some, sometimes and often in these element updates and these transportation element updates, often a consultant will add on the safety work to identify hotspot collision areas. Will that be part of this scope as well, or will that be separate, maybe more related to a local road safety plan update?
I think it's a combination of the two, because one of the things that our current process, the consultants that are doing our transportation analysis are doing, is using the transportation background report that was created for the 2018 and then 21 subareas, because they cover a half-mile outside of the boundaries of both of those subareas. So there, I believe, was some safety analysis done there. We did not go beyond that for the 24 periodic review. However, the raised grant that Troy was just talking about is intended to help cover a new citywide traffic analysis, and that would be a citywide safety review as well. Because part of what we're wanting to do with the downtown and the Green Street Loop is to make things safer for pedestrians where we want them to be walking. So we've got kind of a halfway there answer now, and more to come.
Anyone else?
I have a question, kind of unrelated to what we're talking about here, but recently, this commission considered a discussion on the multifamily tax exemption extension on Gravely Lake. There was a vote that was sent back to the city council with a recommendation. And if I remember correctly, there was two open public comment sections because of a technical error with the Zoom.
Yep.
And minimal participation. I don't think anybody showed up to talk about that. Then there was pretty large, I think, public discussion happening outside of, you know, in the community. Is there, what is the discussion in the city, or is there any, what is the thinking of, how can we, how can we get that input in here on the front side of these, these recommendations as opposed to kind of the backlash on the, on the backend? Is there any discussion on that currently?
Well, first of all, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Bokey because he is going to talk to you in a few moments about what happened with that precise topic on Monday night. Council took it up and had their public hearing. But in terms in general of increasing public participation on issues that can cause some interest and cause some participation when people find out about it. For the comprehensive plan this, this time, we did quite a bit of extra effort to make sure that we had good public participation. We had two steering committees, we had four open houses, we've had, I think it worked, this is meeting number 20 or 21, where the Planning Commission has talked about it. We've had mailings out to people's houses, and I think that made a difference because at those open houses, the first one probably had 80 to 100 people, the second one about 50, the third about 35. So that's way bigger than, as you've all seen, usual Planning Commission meeting, right? And I would assume that because we're doing another mailing regarding the comp plan that talks about when all the public hearings are being held this year, you will have people here and you will hear from them. And there's also opportunity for people to submit their comments. If they can't make it here physically or on Zoom for a particular meeting, they can do it ahead of time in writing and just email it into everybody, and it's all official. Whether the city could do that all the time on every single topic, realistically, then the answer is no, because of the amount of budget that requires. We've probably spent close to $40,000 on our public outreach mailings alone, let alone all the other stuff. So the question was raised Monday night, how to improve people's notice ahead of time when, when an issue that they are so concerned about, obviously, is coming to the commission level before it hits council. That's going to be a budget question ultimately. The city's about to do its next biennial budget conversation. And I would assume that the council will bring that as one of the topics they talk about.
Right.
Yeah.
I have one more question, kind of in that same vein, and this is regarding the Edgewater Park discussion. So it kind of was in that same token. There was a lot of, I participated in those meetings that you're talking about. I sat in on two of those community discussion forums. I can't remember how they were termed. But there was one specific about Edgewater Park, and there were some A-frame signs produced by the city that were strategically placed in the community. And either they did not get edited properly, or they were just incorrect, but they had the wrong date on them.
Oh.
And I think that's a pretty large miss by somebody.
Sure.
Has that been discussed at all? I mean, is there, was there a change to process? Or, I mean, I don't know what lead, what potentially led to that misprint, but that seems like a pretty low-hanging fruit that we got to make sure that's, that's right.
I would agree with you. I'm not sure which department did that advertising and how the date was done incorrectly. I am sure that that's been discussed within that department, and it won't happen again. Yeah, we're all human.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Spear. I believe Mr. Bokey's next, or what do you have for us first?
No, if you want to have Mr. Bokey speak.
Mr. Bokey, sir. Good to have you with us, sir. Give us the good word.
Nice to be here on this beautiful evening. Paul Bokey, Lakewood City Council. So before I speak to what was mentioned by Commissioner Herr, I do, I do want to talk a little bit about transportation. It's something that's been very important to this, to this city council probably for the last 10 years. I think prior to that, some of you, Bob, Lynn, you were here for the beginnings of cityhood and whatnot, and there were a lot of things on councils' plate. So I, I don't want to come across as disparaging the efforts of previous councils. I, I think they did what they could. It was very much concentrated on major arterials like PAC Highway, and there were reasons for that, really didn't go into the neighborhoods much. One of the reasons I actually ran for city council was that a number of neighborhoods had never even been impacted by cityhood, right? There was nothing, you could go out your door, and nothing had changed, right? You might have had better police service and things like that, but from the perspective of actually delivering infrastructure improvements with parks and, and streets. So the, the things that you talked about tonight, street lighting, very important, and, and we took a number of measures to make sure and made that a policy. Really trying to get, so we talk a lot about grants, but remember, and I'm sure Ms. Talvo could tell you, small neighborhood projects don't grant, right? They just don't, there's no money for that. The taxpayers of Lakewood have taken those projects on. We've put some debt on the books, we've, we've moved funds around at various times to get those smaller projects completed, and because we felt that they were really, really important to that, and, and I think the comments about pedestrian-level lighting are important. We have a few on Phillips Road and a couple other places. But that's a discussion that we, we continue to have. Hence the importance of the, the, the comprehensive plan and the, you're, you're really writing the policy. These are the policies that are going to be the umbrella, that everything is going to get done. So those elements, when you start talking about things like pedestrian, multimodal, various things like that, you know, you're going to have councils in the future that may not emphasize those things, but they're in the comprehensive plan. And you can go back to that, and staff's really expecting, well, you guys wrote this, you guys approved this. So we've been out searching, and we're updating the, the non-motorized plans and various things like that. And so it, it becomes an incredibly important document, important policy document. And so I do appreciate the, I really do appreciate the efforts of the, of the Public Works Department. I think that they, they've taken on a lot, and they've got a lot of stuff going on. And really, really proud of them. And, and I think people are really noticing the, the changes that we've made, and it's certainly made it. I work for the county during the day, not in transportation, I'm actually a budget person. But another person who works in the public works side said, Paul, he said, you have to realize now that sidewalks are increasingly considered in urban areas as a recreational amenity. And so that's, you know, people are out walking, and, and I see that in my neighborhood. So I'm, we're, we're always hopeful when people are walking and doing things. So thank you very much for your efforts. Multifamily tax exemption, thank you for your efforts on this. It went to council, and as it went through your process, somebody who had not been involved in the process discovered that he had not been involved in the process, and the neighborhood was like, wow, we didn't even know. And the, the council appreciates that concern. You know, the, and I want to state, the City of Lakewood, you guys and the City of Lakewood did nothing illegal, right? People will always comment, especially if they're not on the winning side, well, there wasn't, they argue process, right? Isn't that what attorneys say? If the facts are on your side, you argue the facts. If the, if they're not, then you argue process. So it always becomes about process. But what became clear over, you know, we've had, we've had several, and they can talk at public comment, that the neighborhood has real concerns about the expansion of the multifamily tax exemption. And so the feeling on the council, and we just, we just shipped it back to you guys, is that at least one more public hearing be held. And then I, the staff will work, making sure that the neighborhood is informed. It'll probably be more like a zoning change where we are required to, to send out postcards within a half-mile of, of the area. I'm assuming we're going to do that. We've, we've now set this precedent, and we, I brought this up the other day. I said, well, you're setting precedence here that someone can say, oh, I didn't know about it, and we're going to, are we going to ship it? I'll always ship it back to you guys. I hope the answer is no. But in this case, the staff will have to do a lot more work. They'll have to send it out. The neighborhood will come to speak to it, and you'll have a hearing at some point in time. I know, and I appreciate that you have a very busy schedule this year. And I mentioned that to the council also. So you, at some point in time, will have another public hearing. Another, one of the other members said that he would like a more detailed, if in fact you do decide to go forward with it, and you forward it to the, you approve it again and send it forward to the council, that he would like a more detailed explanation as to why you think the expansion should be. He found the detail wanting on that. Just said, well, the area should be expanded. I think, and you can work with staff on that if, if in fact you approve it to go forward. So that's the explanation on that. That's, I even had to watch, re-watch the meeting from the other night to make sure that I could get this far, right? Because I was like, well, I got to come in there on Wednesday and and tell these folks that this thing's going to get redone. But the idea is to increase neighborhood participation in it and so they can speak to it. You may also hear from some people who want to redevelop the area and they want the exemption. So we'll go from there. Again, it is a tough policy choice. It really is because it's one of these areas now where and it was mentioned a number of times during this process to the folks in the neighborhood, this is not a zoning change. People can build apartments on those lots today. This is just a tax exemption that other areas of the city have. And they understand that, I believe. Because that was, that was mentioned several times, but they do have concerns. And I think that they will come to express them when the time comes. So.
I think that on that subject, the commission worked with what we had. What was made available to us. It was, I guess, from the council's perspective. It was unfortunate that we didn't hear the rest of the story, shall we say, or all the story. We, as you indicated, there were only a couple of individuals. Unfortunately, so maybe our advertisement, our advertising was not flawed per se, but maybe not as it should have been. And so I think we all look forward to hearing the rest of the story or the other side of the story, shall we say. Mr. Larson, go ahead.
I'm very pleased to have the issue remanded. It is a much better process than when we went through the vegetation density process and the lobby for that vegetation process literally went right around us and convinced the city council that different rules than the ones that we worked hard to prescribe should be done. And we were all pretty much left flat-footed and a little bit angry about that. And so having the process work this way, I think is healthy. And it's clear that the communication about the issue to the entire community wasn't as clear early on, so that people didn't notice the action. But when they did, then and the arguments occurred, then it got remanded and and such. So I'm pleased that that if that's a fix, then great. If not, I'm just pleased it's gone that way.
The wrinkle we ran into was if it was a zoning change, we would have had to make those clarifications. We would have had to let everybody know by postcard. They all would have known. And they could have come and they could have expressed their thoughts about the change. This doesn't qualify as something that triggers that kind of notification. So it just ended up on our website or whatever else we use. And it so we followed the law. Everybody followed the law. It just wasn't adequate in this, in this case. And this is something that we're going to learn as we, as we start to, some of these developments start to rub up against neighborhoods. We're going to have to think about how we want to do this.
I think one thing that was unique about this particular evolution was there were, we had the two sessions and here the extended session. The decision recommendation was made and moved forward to the council. And I think, if I have a, an understanding here, there was a citizen who I'm assuming watched the the recording remotely on YouTube or viewed it at some point afterwards. And distributed a flyer, if you will, throughout that affected area. And, you know, I can't speak to the diversity of the claims that were in there, but I think that's kind of what got created a lot of support or you know, a potential opposition group to the, to the decision. So it would just would have been nice for that to all been on the front side. So we could have considered that as opposed to, you know, kind of the pitchfork mob of, well, you know, we just didn't get that dialogue, which would have been really nice to have.
Any other comments?
If I could, Mr. Chair. One other thing that even stepping up further back from that specific issue, though, is this is a twenty-seven-year-old city. And we're like, I think of it as we're leaving kindergarten and maybe heading into third grade. Meaning there are now changes that has this city turning more into a city as opposed to a used to be an unincorporated county area. And that means growth in a defined, smaller space. And as time goes by, the city is becoming, because of the success so far, a more attractive place to live as well as a more attractive place to bring business. And policies and rules have been set in place, first by choice in the city, but now even more so from top down. This has to happen, right? And so you're starting to have, as Mr. Bokey just said, people are starting to see it on the ground. It's been on paper for a while, but now they're starting to actually feel it and see it. And so the stance that the commission and council take. Are you going to? How to say this the right way? I don't mean to offend. How responsible you be to what's already been adopted as policy versus what you're hearing in a public hearing? Right? And it may not be the happiest of meetings sometimes to hear that either at this level or at the council level. But yeah, we're in a growing pain phase. And because Lakewood is such a young city, it might be even more hard to bear for the short term than in some of the other older cities.
Good context.
And it's, and it's difficult to come into every conversation and try to explain the Growth Management Act. That, you know, if we could wave a wand at the city council and say, well, you know, in my neighborhood, I live in a house and it, I want it to never change. I want it to be single-family residential with a certain size lot and a white picket fence and a dog. And we'll all be great. And I wish I could assure every neighborhood in the city that nothing will change. And events, individuals, the legislature, starting with the state legislature, much more powerful than the city council are dictating. I mean, they're under pressure. Therefore, we are under pressure to provide more housing, period. I mean, that's and everyone will agree with that. I get it. We need more housing, but and I get it. So, so you run for election and you end up in these situations where it's like, this is a Hobson's Choice, I guess. It's, it's, it's you this is, this is difficult. So for instance, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but the reason that we're getting the development in the Barnes and Noble. Stop me if I'm breaking any laws here by saying is the downtown plan that was approved by a former planning commission, approved by the city council. The downtown suburbia plan has a lot of housing in it. And, and I'll tell you, I was one of them that was like, yeah, I think there's too much housing in it. But we have to hit that target, that population target. We got to show people. And it's pretty easy math. This is how many, how many people you're going to take. You have to Tiffany has to sit down and show people in 2050, the City of Lakewood has to have capacity for eighty-five thousand people or something. Where are you going to put those eighty-five thousand people? There's not enough houses right now for eighty-five and apartments for eighty-five thousand people. Where are you going to put them? And so in this downtown suburbia plan, there's a lot of housing and there's also a lot of housing in the station district plan. If we can't do, we just got hammered on the Barnes and Noble. I didn't want to lose the Barnes and Noble. But if, but if we don't do that, it's going somewhere else. So I'll take volunteers to a neighborhood to volunteer to take that density. And we won't hear from them, right? We can't get a multifamily tax exemption done on a, on a major thoroughfare. You're not going to have single-family residential areas. People around Gravel Lake saying, yeah, we'll take density, build condos over here. They're not going to do it. And so we took what we thought was best at that point in time. And you get a chance to, the good news is you get a chance to look at the whole thing now in the, in the comp plan update.
Mr. Chair.
If I may ask, what happens if we don't hit that target? What happens if we planned for it and we don't hit it? Those housing targets?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, it's, there's a cynical answer and a practical answer, and then the truth lies somewhere in between, probably.
I'll take the cynical answer.
Okay. Well, the cynical answer is we, if we don't, nothing really happens. There is no hammer other than the Pugheson Regional Council says you don't qualify anymore to get the transportation funds that comes through. That is the two thirty that are in place right now, coupled with you may end up getting challenged by somebody as well. So how big of a threat is that for the city to take on? The practical answer goes back to the PSRC question. So on the one hand, everybody's talking about transportation and you want the funds to do what you want to do. So if you don't follow these rules, you're cutting yourself out of that source of funding. So the, the difficulty in absorbing growth is certainly not unique to Lakewood, but I think there's unique circumstances in here that are causing a little more rub for people than perhaps in Tacoma.
And, and I would say that, as mentioned, we have to show the number. But we don't have to roll over and that doesn't mean everybody just say, I just want to build some apartments over here. We have to do it, right? And we don't want to reach that. And some cities are, are really good at slowing the process down, shall we say. I don't know that we are good. It hasn't been our policy to do that. And we also, by the way, don't charge a lot. We don't charge any impact fees. So I've brought up parks impact fees before and it's never gotten any traction. We can't do school impact fees because our schools aren't, aren't at capacity, right? And so there's that element. Actually, we think we're very good. We just have to show on paper that we can get to eighty-five. The growth has been much slower, by the way. At the rate we're going, we won't be at eighty-five till.
Yeah. And, and the, the rules for the city are that you must allow for this to happen because even those that are really pushing hard on housing densification right now have to recognize that the city does not build units. It is the city that's setting up what hopefully the private market or the subsidized housing developers will come in and then do. So if we are doing our job as a jurisdiction to open the doors for people to do what the legislature on down to whoever's setting policy wants to see done, we've done our job. So if the, if the final number come 2044 is not the eighty-five thousand or the seventy-two six or whatever, that is not going to be shame on you, Lakewood, you did a bad job. It'll be, okay, Lakewood, did you make sure that there are no hurdles that are too high? There's not a reason why it was harder in your jurisdiction versus next door to do this type of housing development. And if so, change your regs, change your zoning, and then it becomes again a new rolling horizon that you're, you're working toward.
Larson.
How dependent are, how dependent are we as a city to receive this funding? What would happen if we didn't comply and didn't get the funding? Could we live without it?
I don't know the number.
Can we adjust our budgets to just plain keep Lakewood more enjoyable by not having it packed with as many people?
I don't know if you want to answer that on behalf of the council. What I can try to do is get you a number from the Public Works Department, the type of funds that the city normally gets through that path. But I would also maybe counter a little bit with status quo right now is not equitable for everybody in the city. There are areas that are very poor. There are people that live in a very different way from other parts of the city. And so if you keep status quo, you're making the decision for those folks to have less of an opportunity for choice. Maybe relocate to another part of the city. And you're also saying, we don't want these attached products, for instance, for our older citizens to downsize when they become empty nesters. Limiting your options for the type of housing that's built. So it's more nuanced than just, let's, let's keep our local self-control with and not change anything at all, coupled with rightfully so, I would say, because originally the Growth Management Act was supposed to be bottom-up. What's happened recently with the city having to react to state law changes about housing? That's not what GMA was originally intended or set up to be. It's been a change because the legislature took that path as a way to try to address the statewide housing need given targeted, or not targeted, but anticipated growth. So kind of think about, it's grays, it's not all black and white, it's status quo might be good for some, but maybe it's not good for everybody.
I had not considered, I had not considered that it would have a deleterious effect on Lakewood's existing citizens. That had, that was not in my, my picture. It was being lorded over to, to do things that
Yeah.
seemed like they're deleterious to the health of the city. But thank you very much for that clarification. I do appreciate it.
I would, I would say being openly hostile for, first of all, we wouldn't. I mean, maybe we could live without some, some traffic grants. The chances are that that would expand, like we try to get grants for parks. I mean, we're sending some things to, in front of the state. And, and, and that kind of that kind of attitude is and I'm not directing it specifically towards you because I totally understand is why the legislature is getting more and more prescriptive. And they are I sat their presentation by a lobbyist for shape because I'm our representative on the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership. And this lobbyist, they, the House passed a measure where if you were trying to cite a homeless facility in the state of Washington and those guys thought that whoever was trying to get it permitted thought that the city was being unreasonable. They could, the legislature, it got to the Senate, it didn't pass. Considered, actually had a bill where the state could permit that facility. So just keep in mind, right now, the state legislature is very much in the, in the camp of, there's, there's probably a majority now that's hey, those rubes are the problem. Right? Those city councils are the problem with, that's why we have a housing shortage. And we're, and if they can't take care of it, we're going to take care of it. And I would be, so so it's, it's all about elections, right? It's, it's elections and who gets elected and what their thought processes are. But the legislature is clearly getting very frustrated with the level of housing production in the state of Washington. And they're, right now, the I feel like as a council member, that they're blaming city councils around the state. And maybe in some cases, they're justified in that. I just want to say a couple more things. Next week's a big week. Next weekend's a big week. Don't plan to go anywhere outside the City of Lakewood. Friday, April twenty-sixth, COPS versus teachers game. Baron Coleman, a nineteen eighty-one Lakes High grad. He's a teacher at, at Lakes High. He puts on this game. It's at the gym at Lakes and it's a fundraiser. COPS play teachers. The cops are involved also. Police officers are involved in the game. It's just a fun time and he's raising money for the, I believe it's the YMCA Teen Night Program, which is a key program. We've given some money. I think we gave some ARPA money to that. The Clover Park School District has done that also, and they feel it's a key part of trying to help out juveniles and keeping them out of trouble. Saturday, April twenty-seventh is Parks Appreciation Day. So for all of you who can volunteer to, to do that, I think you can go online and actually go in and see what parks and show up. At one PM is the ribbon cutting at Pierce College Baseball Field. It's at Fort Silicon Park there on the far end. Very Uh, very made to NCAA standards and um, uh, we debated this. And and so I want to say this really quickly because I do, I am concerned about overdevelopment of Fort Silicon Park. Pierce College, first of all, they own a big portion of the park. The the boundary line actually runs um, not just in their thing, but they, in areas that we think of as the park, they actually own. They've been a a great partner on any number of things with the city of Lakewood and um, are are a major employer and um, provide education to a lot of folks here in Lakewood. And when they came to us and they said, we would like to do this, the the city and council embraced the idea. We're also hoping that um, it will produce some, some opportunities to bring people into the city. Not just, not just community college baseball, but um, the rental of those fields. And and we're really looking forward to that. Um, it's also dump weekend, Saturday and Sunday. So you're bit, you're going to be busy all day working the park, going to ribbon cuttings. But it is, it is dump weekend, the spring dump weekend. And that's, you take it over to the May facility over here off South Tacoma Way. So for that, I'll answer any other questions. Thank you, I kept you along, but I know we had some big matters to take care of. We appreciate your efforts, this is a big job you guys have, especially this year. So thank you.
We thank you, Mr. Boki, thank you very much for the update. No more questions for Mr. Boki? Okay, for the good of the order. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if it's all right, I I just want to run through the schedule over the next two months because it is very unusual. Um, normally you meet the first and third weeks, but because of what we're covering and upcoming holidays, things are a little different. So I'll just walk through them. I I've sent this to you in email and I'll do it again, but just for the record online for folks, May 1st will be uh, the next meeting where we will start the process of the big 24 comp plan review. Monday, the 13th of May is the Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting. That's an annual thing, it just happens to fall within the middle of all this, too. You're welcome to attend either remotely or in person. Traditionally, uh, the the chair and maybe others would talk about highlights of the year so far as well as your work plan going forward for the rest of the year. It can be as much of a dialogue as you and the council may want to have. Um, it's usually toward the front of the meeting, so starts at 7:00 PM and it'll go until it's done. Two nights later is your second study session on the comp plan uh, package. And then we have a third meeting in May, uh, on May 29th. So you have four meetings in May, right? First, 13th, 15th, and 29th. Then we move forward just one week to June 5th. Will be your normal first week meeting and that is the hearing for the comprehensive plan. You have one week later, June 12th, a special meeting because of Juneteenth, which is when you would have normally met. And then you have one more special meeting on June 26th. And um, should you be ready to do so, June 26th is when you would be taking action on the big plan. If, as we get into this, it becomes clear that you need more time, you want more time, you want to extend the public hearing, you want answers from departments or something like that, because of the breadth and the importance of this um, this item, this this project, feel free to say that you need more time. Uh, the council is kind of waiting to hear that from you as well. They do have their schedule set, but that that is subject to change if you need more time here. Uh, and then assuming we do get done on June 26th, then that whole package would move on to um, the council. And you are off the hook in July and August. So we have a lot of stuff happening in May and June, but July and August, there are no meetings at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, for the good of the order, anyone have any comments or questions regarding anything you all want to talk about? Ms. Wallace, you mentioned something.
I think it's gone long enough.
Okay, at a different time. I want to add to uh, our um, events at the, this Saturday is Friends of the Lakewood Library Book Sale at the St. Mary's Episcopal Church. And yes, they're still going on. Now, I was going to ask you about how we're doing with the library, but we can see it. It's, it's there, it's all nine pieces of that, of that little puzzle. Okay, anything else? Anyone have anything for the evening? No? Spears, are we good to go?
We're good to go, sir.
All right.